What we're talking about tonight is a zoning text amendment. We are not talking about a particular project. It's only the zone change to our regulation that's in front of us.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. As I stated before, my name is Attorney Dominic Thomas, Cohen and Thomas 315 Main Street, Derby, Connecticut. I will announce for those of you that have been down to my office, as of yesterday, I now have a sidewalk. After the last year without one, I now have a full sidewalk. The purpose of this planned development district on behalf of my client that I'm filing here is to provide to the commission the flexibility to designate areas in the town that would be subject to a planned development district. I thank you for the opportunity to present this. I have had a lot of experience with planned development districts over the last thirty, thirty-five years or so, and I believe they are a flexible tool in zoning. And I gave you all a packet. And for those that are not familiar with planned development districts, although I will tell you that your Village Center mixed-use district is a form of planned development district. However, when I go over this, you will see that this is slightly different in the approach and in the way it's managed. The commission, the planned development district allows the commission to utilize its legislative hat. I'm sure you're all aware. You wear your legislative hat when you do zone changes, when you do text amendments. You have an abundance of discretion that the courts do not disturb. When you have your administrative hat on, site plans, special exceptions, subdivisions, the applicant comes before you, and the applicant then needs only comply with the regulations. And in special exceptions, you have a tad more discretion in certain areas, but it is still based on compliance with the regulations, lot size, setbacks, things of that nature, building height, that are specified in the regulations for all properties in the zone. The difference is that a PDD, Planned Development District, that property that qualifies for that, an applicant comes before you, and is applying for a zone text amendment, a zone map amendment for that property. The Connecticut Supreme Court, people have raised the issue, oh, it's spot zoning, oh, it's the Connecticut Supreme Court, two cases, which I gave you, the Campion case, which was the seminal case that was based on the New Haven regulation, and New Haven is a special act zoning town, and the Tillman versus Shelton case, which I'm obviously familiar with because I argued it, which is based on the eight dash two Enabling Act, which is what Oxford operates under. Both of them have held the position that it is a legitimate zoning tool under that, okay? And in the Campion case, Judge Burdon had some language, which I think is important, where he said, and I highlighted some of it, and I'm not, you're not going to be quizzing on this or anything, and I didn't give it to you to go over this today, but they are important cases to read about why you go into PDD zoning. And Judge Burdon said, "We disagree with the plaintiff's application of such a rigid standard." That's what Euclidean zoning is. Euclidean zoning is, we're going to take this large swath of land, in Oxford, for example, we're going to take the area along Route sixty-seven, two hundred and fifty feet on either side, and that's going to be our commercial zone, and here are the standards for that zone. And it said that we never held, nor we declined to, that ordinances should be judged on traditional Euclidean zoning. To the contrary, in the context of a floating zone regulation, and this talked about floating zones and equated them to PDDs, we specifically conclude that zoning district, that by zoning district is not required, and that the board is not limited to traditional Euclidean zoning. Additionally, we have noted that zoning must be flexible to meet the demands of increased population and evolutionary changes in fields such as architecture, transportation, and redevelopment. This was 2006, when Judge Burdon, Judge Burden, there was a burden, both would say similar names, when he made that statement, and it turned out to be extremely, had extreme foresight in it. Oftentimes, you as a commission, and I refer to this because of what the chairman said at the beginning of the public hearing, when he said, "This is a text amendment. It is not site-specific." And the PDD is a regulation in your zoning regulations. It doesn't apply to a specific property until, until the applicant comes before you with that property. So right now, you often will get an application. For example, somebody can come in and say, "I want to amend the text for the commercial zone. I want to amend the text. I want to amend the map, and I want to move this commercial zone into a residential zone," or vice versa, okay? You don't know. You don't have a plan before you. And now they're going to amend the zone, and once they amend that zone, then the uses in that zone apply to that property that they just changed the zone on. Or if they do a text amendment, the entire zone that they did the text amendment for now has different standards. But it applies across the board. It's not related to a piece of property. And when you're doing that, when you're, when you've already set the standards, if there is compliance, you cannot ask for any extras. You just, the person just follows the regulation. And if there's nothing in the regulation about an extra buffer and everything, you can't ask for it when you're wearing your administrative hat. In the PDD concept, the applicant comes before you with a concept plan for a specific parcel of property and a statement of uses and standards, or the PDD, which has bulk standards in it, which has the setbacks and everything in it proposed for that piece of property. Now, I'm going to say this probably a dozen or more times. That application for the PDD is a zone change, and a zone, it's a zone map change and a zone text change. That's why I gave you the two cases, because they say it over and over again. It is a zone. It is not, it sets no precedent on your part. Because you give one property a PDD, and I think Commissioner Swan, in his explanation, stated this thing, each application stands on its own. Each PDD stands on its own. It forms no ability, and nobody can come before you and say, "You gave him or her a PDD. I want the same one." No, doesn't work that way. It is a zone change. You're wearing your legislative hat. In a, in the application, in the application for that piece of property, you are wearing your legislative hat, okay? And that way, you can make very sound decisions for the development on that property. So to give you an example, what I did, what I included in the packet is a sample of a statement of uses and standards and map that would come before you in such a proposal. So if you flip beyond the cases, you see the zoning regulation for Plan Development District 107 in Shelton. I'm not saying that the form that you develop will be the same, but if you look at it, this is what is before you when the applicant comes to you on X property and wants to do something, okay? This, the statement of uses and standards, is the zoning regulation. And the statement of uses and standards ends with a Schedule A, a property description of that property. The statement of uses and standards sets out the permitted uses for that site. So for example, if the piece of property were a commercial zone and has, just from memory, your commercial zone probably has twenty, twenty or twenty-five uses between site plan and special exception. If a PDD is laid on that zone, the only uses are the one in paragraph five, that, or paragraph, whatever paragraph is. It lists the permitted uses, number one. Number two, you have area, location, and bulk standards, and you set it for that property. Again, you're acting on your legislative hat. So they set it. You could, when you're going through it, you could say, "I don't like these setbacks." One of the examples I give the people on a PDD, there is a PDD I did in a town where the setback for a five-story hotel, the setback, the rear setback is ten feet. Why? Well, when we were dealing with that site, the fact is that the commission wanted the building tucked into that corner, tucked into the back to give more room on the other side. And they were able to do that because the rear was up against a seventy-foot cliff. And at the top of the seventy-foot cliff was the mobile home park with the nearest mobile home a hundred feet in. So there was no impact at all on the neighbors, but they could make that decision because of the topography. So it gives you the flexibility to do that and tell the applicant, "No, I want you to move it." It also gives you the flexibility to say, "I need you to increase the buffer. I need you to do that." Because you're operating under your zone change, okay? And that is your red flags. The other thing that you have before you, which is extremely, extremely important, is the next page. I gave you an eleven-by-seventeen. Now, I will tell you this. When you have a, when you have an initial concept development plan, you do not get one sheet. I just wasn't going to put out the whole set of plans, all fifteen, twenty pages. So now, when they're before you, it isn't like, in a, for a PDD, it isn't like the public, the neighbors, the people giving notice could say, "Well, what are they going to do?" It's right here. This is the initial concept development plan. This is the plan that they have to follow. This is the plan that you can amend. This is the plan that you can say, "No, and, and I need you to move this building here. I need you to move this building there. We, we don't want it done that way." We want, in other words, you're having a discussion that you would normally have in a site plan application, but you're having it wearing your legislative hat. So you have, it's often called contract zoning. It goes back and forth between the commissioner and the applicant to hopefully, hopefully develop the best project possible. But my main point in giving you this is that when those people say, "Well, what are they going to do?" In a PDD, the public sees it, okay? So that is an important concept to how, to how, how it is being done. Now, I'll get back to my little spot here, okay? So, again, as I said, you're operating under your full legislative discretion. Now, I'd like to take some time to go through the regulations with you. I'm assuming you all have a copy of it. I did not put it in my packet, but I'm assuming you all have a copy of the proposed regulation. And I want to start with, really in the regulation, the comment that was made by Keith Rosenthal in the N V cog thing. It's correct. You don't have special development district, special development area designations in your reg right now. It's in the PDD reg. It says in there, and this is very important, in one B, "The planned development district may only be established in an area designated a SDA, Special Development Area, by you, by the Planning and Zoning Commission. SDA shall be in areas which the commission determines are best suited for economic development, multifamily slash cluster residential, and where appropriate, commercial and office uses." So for example, later on in here, the PDD that I have drafted requires sewer, public sewer and public water. In a, in a town like Oxford, that limits it to certain areas at the present time. Whether or not infrastructure improvements are proposed, these are the kind of things that, that the commission has as a planning commission, as part of its planning, because you're, when you're wearing your legislative hat, you're more the planning commission. So when you're doing these, you're more the planning commission, although it interacts, the PDD interacts with the zoning. So it's up to you to study and decide where you want this to be allowed to be filed. And I want to stress again, when you designate something an SDA, it gives a property owner in there or an applicant absolutely no rights under zoning other than to file an application, okay? A lot of times, there's a misconception, "Oh, if you make it an SDA, then they can do, they can do what it says here." They can do multifamily. No, they can't. They have to come in before you. All the SDA has you do it. And I created flexibility for some reason. I happen to be, for those of you that know, a little bit familiar with Oxford, having lived here for twenty-some odd years and having been town council, having, having been on in Kevin's seat for six years during that time. seat for six years during that time, and I was the one that worked mainly on Oxford Greens. So I'm familiar with it. And my whole point is this. For example, one can look at the sewer and water commercial corridor that stretches from Seymour up to 42 and say, well, that's an appropriate area for an SDA. But there may be other areas for an SDA. For example, last Thursday, I was pleased to be invited by the Connecticut Business and Industry Association, the CBIA, to a conference of business executives in the area of Upper Fairfield County and lower, Upper Fairfield County and the western portion of New Haven County. And these executives were, it was a housing conference. They were desperate for more housing so they can recruit appropriate people or keep people in here. And it was a very, it was an extremely interesting conference to listen to them. And one of the things they pointed out, one of the, I'm not sure what company it was. I think it was something in research and IT. He said, I have three acres behind my factory, behind my office, whatever. I'd like to be able to put a apartment building on the back. That's how, that's the comment he made. He said, I'd like to be able to put an apartment building. And we were talking about it. They wanted it. So we have a large, in Oxford, you have a large corporate area. It's been developed, but I will tell you that if you went up there and talked to the businesses up there, or you went up there and talked to the businesses they're being recruiting, one of their top priorities is housing. Does that mean you should just allow anybody to apply anywhere to put housing up there? No. But you may look at it in your ability to determine where's an SDA and designate certain areas where there might be housing and it might be beneficial. You could also find other areas in town, but that's your job. The key thing about a PDD is you have to have trust in yourself as a commission. And frankly, in talking with other commissions, I'm getting a little tired of hearing the commission say, well, this is great. We can do a good job, but we don't know if the people that come after us will. That's BS. If anybody takes this position, you have to assume that they are taking it with the honor and distinction and the desire to be, to work in accordance with the regulations and do what is best for the town. But that's who you have to have trust in. Not me, not the applicants, in yourselves. That's how a PDD operates. It is within, and what I proposed here, for example, I proposed 40,000 square feet. Why did I do that? I did that because I had a conversation with this commission in an informal, a couple of years ago, I believe, for someone who wanted to do apartments, if you recall. And we talked about the parcels along 67 that were accessible. And we talked about the fact, and I got this honestly from one of your commissioners, I can't remember which one, talked about, we also might want to develop the smaller parcels. So I put 40,000 in here because you do have smaller parcels. In certain towns, they actually go as low as 10,000 square feet where they have high urban areas, the older urban areas. You obviously don't need that, but I chose 40,000 square feet because you have some acre parcels along 67 that you may want to develop for small, smaller residential or smaller mixed use. But it is within your discretion. As it says in here, I'm not going to go through every page, and I showed you already, the statement of uses and standards sets out the uses. The applicant asks you if these uses are okay. You say if they are. The applicant asks you if these buffers, if these setbacks, if this impervious coverage is okay. You then get to make the final decision. The PDD requires public water supply and municipal sewers. PDD allows architectural reviews. Normally, under site plans and special exceptions, you have no architectural or aesthetic review. You have a lot of applicants before you that are nice enough to say, okay, I'll put that on the front of my building. This has it in your regulation. And note in paragraph four there, the commission shall consider proposed design treatments and building materials. The only reason I point that up is I will be going before another commission on a modification to a Plan Development District in two weeks, I think, two or three weeks. And I was notified that I have to bring, because they're changing the facade of a building in the PDD, and I have to bring, I don't, my client does, has to bring samples of the material. That is the kind of control we're talking about because the commission couldn't appreciate it from the rendering. They wanted an actual sample of the material. That is the kind of controlling. You have the ability to consider natural features. Very often, when you're doing a site plan, the people are going to say, well, I need to take all this out and I need to flatten it some more. You're in this situation, you can say the proposed use, I want you to build the topography because that, you have the ability in here. You get, as I said, a detailed plan. And when you look at the detailed plan, when you go along there, we are not talking about just a plan on the back of a napkin, just that one page. We are talking about that the concept plan, at the time of the concept plan, you're going to have a set of civil site plans, you're going to have architectural plans, you're going to have, you can ask for whatever you want. You can, if you deem it necessary, you can have a traffic study. All of them will have to have a stormwater drainage report. You can require lighting proposals. You can require proposed vehicle or pedestrian access. So for example, if somebody came before you with a subdivision, the law is clear. Somebody came before you with a site plan, the law is clear. You have made a determination that if it's a site plan use or if it's a subdivision, that the entire infrastructure around that area is sufficient. And the only thing you can ask for in traffic and other issues are things that impact that property and along the roads along that property. And the cases are clear on that. You can't go, look, we want you to study these intersections down here. No. Here, you get a full traffic study. You can have them say, well, you're going to have, if they're on a state road, it's obviously DOT. But even if it impacts a town road, you could say, I want widening. There's a PDD which is being, which has been approved and which is in construction right now, that the town that it's in is getting, the state is getting a whole new intersection and light trains, but the city is getting 200 feet of road widening and repaving to add extra lanes so that it's industrial park area will have a better traffic flow out. Those are the kind of things that come out of a PDD. It does require a public hearing. And that public hearing, again, provides the public the opportunity. And the way it is, the public then has seen the plan. If the public wants to hire its own experts, or you want to get your own experts, then you can have others, you have a multitude of experts that come in. But it gives the public to be able to comment on a specific plan. And then it goes into the findings you have to make. And this is just the concept plan, the findings you have to make on that. And again, you can read them, but in number 11, they are quite detailed. And they provide for a substantial number of things that you can make findings. And they say provisions, for instance, in 11F, provisions will be made for the ongoing maintenance of parking areas, stormwater management facilities, open space area, and infrastructure component, not proposed for acceptance by the city. The detail and the control is amazing. Last year, I was before a commission with asking permission, asking, actually, two years ago, asking permission to replace, this was on behalf of a tenant that was going in, to replace the granite curbing that was required in the concept plan with concrete curbing because the tenant did not, the tenant had to do it and they didn't want to have to spend the money. But that's the kind of minutia that you have control. Then, once that's approved, that is when the zone is laid down. The property is now zoned for the PDD at that point. Now the applicant needs to file final site development plans. And these are to a much more detail. They're not construction, they're not building plans, but they are much more detailed. And at that point, and this is important, for instance, before the final site development plans are filed, and the applicant can do this at any time, they have to go to wetlands if there's a regulated area. Now, you're going to get more detailed architectures. You may demand more detailed site plan. You're going to get the site lighting and illumination plans in greater detail. So these site plans have to be filed and the provision is that for approval within six months of the effective date. That's what I put that in. I will tell you this, other towns say a year, other towns say two years. It is the discretion of the commission. I put the six months in because I found that commissions mostly like, if we're going to approve a PDD, we want action quickly. We want something to go quickly. But again, this is something, we're in here for a text change, you can approve, deny or modify. But I wanted to point out some of the things that are in there. And then it does provide on smaller parcels, that's the point of the simultaneous application provision. On larger parcels, unless the client's Mexican drug lord laundering money, the larger proposals are, and I often tell people this, you know, and you've heard me say this, if you line up me, you line up the architect and you line up the engineer and you say, who's the most expensive? Everybody points to me all the time. And I tell them, I'm not the most expensive until there's an appeal. Okay? Every time you ask for a change in those two-foot by three-foot white sheets of paper, it's a cha-ching. Okay? So the whole point is, a lot of times, they're not going to come in and waste time and having to keep changing. They're going to want to get the PDD approved first before going to final site development plans. However, on a small site where there's not going to be much movement of the building, and the best example I can give you and how people watch their money, one of the first PDDs I did was Walmart in Shelton. And Walmart, after we got through the enormous public hearings and meetings and the PDD was approved, Walmart comes to me and goes, we want to pivot our building and put it in the back left corner. And the minute I said to them, okay, but that's a major modification of the PDD, you will require a public hearing. We're going to leave it where it is. Okay? That's, again, part of the control you have. Applicants can come in and say, I want a change. You gave me a density of 10 units, 12 units per acre. I want 15 units per acre. Fine. You got to come back for another public hearing and you got to amend. Every time you amend the statement of uses and standards, it is the same as amending the zoning regulations because it is the zoning regulations. So they have to come before you. There's no backdooring you, there's no sneaking it in. Like I said, I've had to file minor modifications just because someone is changing a facade and you would have the same power. And, you know, again, the usual language with respect to bonds, and you can impose additional limitations. I leave that to you. You can extend the time persons to file. And modifications, again, you make a determination if it's major or minor. Recent, again, examples are best, the recent decisions where they disagreed with me because they do that a lot. I thought putting an urgent vet, believe it or not, there is, by the way, an urgent vet business that is similar to urgent care for cats and dogs. And I thought, it should be allowed under the medical office or personal services. And the commission said, no, we want you to amend the statement of uses and standards. So we had to do a public hearing for it. So that's the kind of discretion and control that you have as a commission. And, you know, again, I know you've probably looked at it, but I want you to understand, and that same thing that I'm saying to you over and over again, is that it is a zone change. It is not precedent. You are not bound by what you do and you have much more control. And so I think it's important for you to understand that. It is contract zoning. You have a contract with a developer and you negotiate the terms, except that you are in total control because you are the commission. Now, I've got to go into this next thing because I am familiar with Oxford. I do know what your housing stock is like. I'm hoping that none of you live in a bubble so you all know that there's a housing shortage. Like I said, I've been to these manufacturers' meetings and I will tell you what I said at the forum last week. I stood before all the manufacturers and I said to them, how many of you have been to a planning and zoning commission meeting for a housing project, a housing proposal within five miles of your factory? And no one raised their hand, to which I said, you know what? I don't mind being on the front lines, but I would like occasionally to have somebody having my back when I'm at, if that's a big enough problem for you. And apparently it was. This was the CBIA. We're not talking about desegregate Connecticut or other, you know, housing advocacy. We're talking about the manufacturers. And I said, if you want it, then you have to do it. So you have to be there, you have to be part of it. So what happens, and the question is, why do you need a housing regulation? I did include from that thing, a two-page sheet, which is the very end. And I'm not trying to scare you or say that Oxford should adopt and provide all 110,702 units that are short statewide in the lowest version of it. This is from the CBIA draft. I probably shouldn't have, I don't know, maybe I'm plagiarizing too much with that, but I wanted to show it to you, to show you that was the discussion that was taking place. This is the housing shortage. So what happens if you say, because in Oxford, let me say, the only zone you have that really, other than Oxford Greens, is the Vic Mudd, those two provide the ability to have alternative means of housing, middle housing, attached units, cluster housing. So, and so my point is that subdivisions, and I'm sure you get a few in here, have become few and far between. Even in single-family homes, most of my clients who are builders are looking to build smaller homes on smaller lots. They're still expensive, but they're smaller homes and smaller lots. And when we are talking about, and this was a big conversation last Thursday, when we are talking about affordable, we really should be talking about, there were two things. Number one, we should be talking about workforce housing. Workforce is the proper term for it. And that housing that's between 80% and 120% of the area median income is what workforce housing is. And that is what is needed in the town. So this gives you an opportunity to raise your stock for that. But the other thing that people don't address is affordable small A. Affordable small A means you increase your supply to stabilize rents. At the presentation that was made, they talked about how two of the hottest areas in the country, Austin, Texas, and I forget where the other one was, it may have been in New Mexico, maybe Albuquerque, where rents were going skyrocketing, they increased substantially their supply of housing of various kinds, high-density residential apartments, townhouses, and even cluster housing. And over the course of a year, year and a half, after they came on board, the rent stabilized a bit. That's called small A affordable. Now, for the housing shortage and the demands, the PDD gives a town like Oxford the ability to address it without having it forced on you. Now, this is where part of the presentation could get a little sticky. Some people say, he's threatening us. I'm not threatening you. I'm telling you a fact doing this. What if you say no? Well, if you say no, what are you saying to the developers that want to do housing? And they do want to do housing. They do. I'll tell you, I did, I helped the developer build the 94 unit, I think it is 94-unit apartment in downtown Derby at the end of Minerva and Caroline Street. For those of you that have any Valley cred or have been down to the Valley, you know, you know that. When I said to people, they're building apartments at the end of Caroline and Minerva, the eyebrows, you know, went up. Yeah? That opened up two months ago. It has a waiting list. That's a mini example of what it's like. Most instances, especially when you're talking about those apartments that even In most instances, especially when you're talking about those apartments that even don't have amenities, what they call the higher-end but B and C level ones, they are filling up before they're done. So they are a very, they are very attractive to developers. And this regulation would not guarantee in any way, shape, or form that a developer would not file an 8-30G. But what it does is it gives an invitation, lights just, oh, okay, it gives an invitation, oh, that was Jessica. Is it, is it, is it for the intermission? Is that why the lights are going up? The, the, the whole point is, it gives an invitation to the developer to come and talk to us, and let's develop a plan that we both can like. Because most developers, most, would prefer to do it that way. Once it goes, and you've experienced an 8-30G, once it goes to that, contrary to popular belief, it doesn't overrule your regulation, it just shifts the burden. You get the burden that I have, and you have to then prove it. And that is, while that has been an effective tool to increase housing, I believe in Oxford, it's better that you have a vehicle, a zoning vehicle, that allows you to invite developers to come to you and develop a project, whether it includes high-density residential, whether includes a mixed use with commercial, and develop it with you. And I will conclude with this comment, and then go to questions. Economic development. For the longest time, I mean, Oxford has a prime example of a quote-unquote "economic development" home run. It's called the Power Plan. Your other big economic development project is Oxford Greens. Those are the ones that generate more in taxes than they take out in services. They're a positive. That is what economic development is. The other, the other missing term in economic development is, that economic development is people that live in town that have this in their pocket, they have money to spend. People are more and more desiring not to travel to shop, not to travel to eat, not to travel to go to a little store to buy gifts. So when you bring those people into the town, you are increasing the economic base. The increase in the economic base attracts more businesses into the town. And the new thing that's coming about is when you increase your housing, you're increasing the value of your industrial or corporate areas, because now you want business, businesses can look at it and say, "We have," and go and advertise, go and interview at NYU, or go and interview at some college out of state and say, "We want you to come to our town." And guess what? You can live within five miles of our office. And these are the kind of things that are, that are available when you look at housing appropriately. And it's a much better way to do it that way. And I will tell you this, if you go around to towns that have a lot of high-density residential, you will find that the largest taxpayers in the town, when you take out the utilities, when you take out the UIs and the other sources of the world, and the equarians of the, of the world, the largest taxpayers are very often the high-density residential projects. Because especially in the one- and two-bedroom area, which most of them are, they do not generate any children. And I want to state this for the record, there is no problem with children. And I will say this, it's unfortunate that children have been talked about in zoning meetings like it's worse than nuclear waste. You want children in your town, but children are usually found in your four-and-five, three, four-and-five-bedroom colonials. They're not found in the apartments. Thank you, and I hope you had a chance to really go through it, and I'm prepared to answer any questions.
First from the commission, does anyone have a comment or question for the... Lisa.
Can you explain what you're affordable? Well, in the regulation, affordable, when you apply for a PDD, if somebody comes in and has no, I think you have an affordable housing plan right now, so you can establish the fact that when you're in a PDD, yes, you want to do high-density residential, we would like you to do 10%, 15%, 20% at 80% AMI. You can have that discussion with the clients. And a lot of times, the discussion involves economic things, like, for example, 80% AMI has been found a lot of times to not have any, not to not have any impact, it does have a financial impact. But many developers are agreeing to do a percentage at 80% AMI at workforce housing. There are also the opportunities to, to, to do that. So any, most towns now that I go before, on a high-density residential, rental residential, are requiring percentages anywhere from 10% to 20% at 80% AMI. When you get into 60% AMI, that's when you're having a financial impact, and you've got to look at all the factors. So for example, there was one project where the off-site traffic demands required by the state of Connecticut, because it was a state road, were, you know, in the $2.5 million, $3 million range. So there was a give and take as to how many affordable units, you know, could be done. They reduced the amount because they, the town realized it was going to get a benefit in the, in the infrastructure, you know, as a result, it was the developer who was going to pay for the improvement. And so, but there's a, that is up to you. You can do nothing, or you can do, I don't think if I put a, I'm not sure if I, did I put a mandatory one in this regulation, to be honest, I've written, huh? Yeah, voluntary, voluntary affordable unit. But it's a, it's a zone change. So if you say to a developer, you've got a nice project before you, and you say to your developer, "I want 15%, I want 10%, whatever," and the developer says to you, "No," then your response is, "Thank you, motion PDD denied." Who's that? Well, if, and I want to be clear when I answer this to you, if you pass the PDD reg and you designate an area SDA, right? Then a developer can use that reg to, as the vehicle to file an application. Now, right now, if somebody comes in with an 8-30G, all they knew, all they need to do is draft a regulation that allows them to file it on the property that they're doing it, focus it on that property, and do it. So there's no difference. You know what I mean? No. Most developers would, the whole goal of the PDD is when a developer is thinking about 8-30G, is to be able to say to the developer, in some of these circumstances, "You know what? Why don't you do the PDD, and we can talk about it? And, you know, we may be able to give you a little more density, you give us a little more affordable units at 80% at workforce housing, and it's, you know, and, and we can work it out." It doesn't stop them from filing it. It does, it does, if you, as you go through it, it does give you the ability in arguing against a, an 8-30G, arguing against it, to say, "Look at all the PDD applications we've approved with affordable housing. We're trying to do it, and, you know, and we have these issues." That's not a guarantee that you're going to win. Frankly, the rule of thumb is this: of all the 8-30Gs, one-third are settled, one-third you lose, and one-third the towns win. So the town's batting average at 333 would get you a good contract in the major leagues, but it doesn't get you anything else.
I have a question. If we were to include a PDD in our regulations, and say a developer comes in up the road, and we decide it's not going to work, so we deny it, when it goes to court, does the fact that we have a PDD and have denied that application carry any weight in the court? In other words, are we going to lose out in court because of this?
Okay. Are you talking about an 8-30G?
No, no. I'm talking about the PDD.
Okay. You're wearing your legislative hat, okay? I have a phrase that I use. When people come to me and say, "I've been denied my zone change, I want to appeal it," you know, where the commission was wearing a legislative hat, I do two things, two things. I let them know that my retainer was really high, right up front. And number two, I tell them, challenging a commission who has denied a zone change, a map change, or a text change, using, wearing its legislative hat, is the equivalent of walking up a glass mountain in penny loafers, is the phrase I have. You have very little chance of winning. So if, if somebody comes in to you and, for example, wants to force you to do an SD, I mean, in the SDA, comes before you with a PDD application that is a little bit wackadoodle, you know what I mean? And you say, "No," they're not going to be able to win on appeal. Now, they could come back and try to do an 8-30G, you know what I mean? That's something separate. But no, they will, they are, the chances of their winning an appeal when you're wearing your legislative hat are very slim to none. Almost as bad as me hoping to be 6-1 next week.
Thank you. Is there any other commissioners have a question?
I have a question.
Sure.
In your proposed regulation under two-way, it says, "Applications that includes high-density residential shall include a voluntary affordable housing component." I have two questions, actually, maybe three. Is there a definition of high-density residential?
High-density, I did not put a high, a definition of it. High-density residential usually means, in most people's, anywhere from 10 units or more, you know what I mean? Out, that's what a lot of towns consider it. Some towns consider it six units that are attached or more that are for rental. Those are, I mean, but that's a, and that's certainly a legitimate question, and you could say, "We'd rather define what that number is when you come before us."
Okay. My next question. The end of the sentence says, "Shall include a voluntary affordable housing component." Does that mean if it's high-density, it has to have an affordable housing component?
Yes, it means that if you're going to come in, you should be proposing, I mean, you can propose two of 100, you know what I mean, if you wanted to. But again, I'm basing this after the fact that in most towns, the developer comes in. Now, let me give you an example about, about it. You could have a situation where the infrastructure improvements that have to be done, the municipal infrastructure improvements for the development are quite substantial, and the person may come in and propose only a smaller percentage based on the fact that they have those type of things. It gives you the flexibility to discuss it with them. That doesn't mean you have to agree to him. But the point is, you're telling people, if you're coming in here with high-density residential, we want to see an affordable component in it. Now, that's for, that's for high-density residential. For example, if you get developments to come in under this that are clustered, a cluster housing, you know what I mean? Wouldn't be considered high-density residential. But it's important for you, and I think you've pointed out, that you may want to clarify that point. So for example, if you, if people come in with a hot, a cluster housing development under the PDD regulation, you're going to find that most developers are somewhat reluctant to go to the affordable units for those that are for sale, you know what I mean? Because that's, and that's a whole different thing. Most of them that are done, that are for, that are for sale, are done under CHAFA programs where there's CHAFA financing. So there could be financing, and they might be able to do it, but you'll find a lot of pushback from developers on that.
Yeah, I have one more question. We, we have a, we already have an affordable housing section in our zoning regulations. Would this PDD regulation cause conflicts or issues between the two?
It's a zone, it's a zone map change and a zone text change. It would supersede whatever's in there. But your affordable housing regulation that you have, and I didn't bring the regulation book with me, it is limited as to where it applies. Isn't that correct? I think, or am I thinking about that? I think it's very limited as to where it, where it applies. Your, but the PDD regulation wouldn't interfere with it. The PDD regulation stands on its own. And your discussion with the developer as to what type of affordable component is your discussion in that zone text change or zone map change? Okay.
Anyone else? Sarah?
Question through the chair. The SDA, does that have any regulations attached to it? Is there a definition of what an SDA is? And then if not, would it be possible to amend this text change or text addition to include some guide rails along the lines of the bulk standards in particular, but also affordability elements?
Well, the special development area provided in here is an area that you decide. So for example, in one community, over the course of some years, they developed, they approved special development areas along certain arteries. When they changed the PDD reg, they incorporated those into the PDD reg. And they said basically, that's it. They also put other stuff in. And they put other stuff in like transitional zones and things of that nature. I kept this reg just for your determination as to where you believe a special development area is. In other words, I, you know, for example, you could pick out the area along 67, you could pick out an area along Airport Road, I'm just throwing it out, and things of that nature. And then you create the boundaries, hopefully identify properties so you don't split properties in half, and say, "This is your special development area." For, to give you an example, Monroe has Main Street development area, and it's a, you go on their map, they have like this crosshatch black thing that goes up Main Street, a couple hundred feet on either side of Main Street. And in that area, it, they have a, this is a little different. In that zone, now, you can do other certain things you can apply for, okay? You would be able to do housing, you know what I mean, or things of that, of that nature if it has certain things. Newtown has something called the South Main Street, something area, Design District. You know, those are the kind of things. That's not what I'm talking about here. I'm talking about the commission, this commission looking at Oxford and saying, "If we want this used, here are the areas we want to use," okay? I have had people say to me, "Well, can we put more bulk standards into the reg?" I'm an average, I'm going to be frank, I trust you guys, that you would be able to look at a site and determine which bulk standards are best for that site, because each site is different. So for example, in one town, they did a regulation, similar but not quite the same, as for residential development, and they wrote in it, it applied to three of their zones, and they wrote in it that the, there had to be a 75-foot setback from the track, a 75-foot buffer. That's, they just put it in the zone. So we came in with a development, and we told them, "We're ready to do this development of smaller, single-family homes, cluster, but we can't do..." "Well, we have the 75-foot." I said, "Okay, you put it in." And one of the commissioners kept saying, "But we should be doing it on a case-by-case basis." This, this proposal, which would have given the town five acres of open space, fantastic open space, if you put 75 feet in, the 23 proposed houses went down to seven. You know what I mean? Because on that site, you didn't need buffers. Why? Because it was surrounded. Because it was surrounded by open space. So that's the kind of reason why you don't put bulk standards in. You leave it to the site that you, you trust yourself to be able to say, this is the setback you need here.
Is there anyone else? Any other commissioner before I go out to the public or staff?
If I understand the question, what you're talking about, you're talking about the comprehensive plan or the POCD? The POCD, I could, POCD are advisory documents. In today's day and age, I'll be very frank, POCDs that are more than, that are pre-pandemic, shall we say, are probably to some extent outdated. The bottom line is that there was talk and, and Quarry Walk was a development that showed the need for the commercial in that area along this and the need for the residential. So it showed how that could work, work together. But when you're talking about housing and providing, and I'll be honest with you, and I could certainly look at the, the POCD, usually most of them talk about the need that most towns require a variety of housing. Most towns require economic development and to provide that. In Oxford, your center, so to speak, is not a center of town like other towns. It's, it's a stretch of, of road, shall we say, from the Seymour border up to the town, up to the Town Hall. That could be considered an area that is conducive to alternative types of housing, middle housing, high-density housing. And it can be also, it, once you bring that in, and by the way, people come first, then the commercial follows. That is the cardinal rule. As opposed to a project like Quarry Walk, which was a single unit like that. But in most towns, when you look and you find it's the residential that comes first, the people come in. Some people say, if you don't have a traffic problem, you don't have a parking problem, you probably don't have full businesses. But in, in that area there, when you look at, you would have to look at the, you know, how much of a center do you want to develop in the town? Where do you want to put your population center? You certainly don't want this kind of stuff, maybe in the middle of, of an R1 district that is loaded with, you know, large lots. You're not going to plank it in there and you're not going to say that in here. But if you're looking at, where do you provide alternate, different types of housing, various kinds that are attributable to people who want to downsize but don't want to go into Oxford Greens? There's a big market right now for, for older people going into smaller apartments. Where do you want to attract your younger people? If you want your younger people to come into town, and I'm sure your POCD talks about this, if you want younger people to stay in town, younger people to come into town, younger people to buy homes in the towns, you got to get them living in the town. And that's it. And then finally, one of the things that's missing from a lot of POCDs is if you want economic development in your corporate and industrial areas, it usually doesn't say this, but now it is a biblical term that you have to provide housing to house those people, those employees in the town. So I, I think that that's, that's the approach I would take in responding to that. No, that, I did, that's the SDA. That is, that section in 1B, this commission designates where? Not necessarily by zone, it's more by location. Yeah, yeah, they pick the location. There may be some areas in a residential zone where they want it, you know what I mean? I don't know. I mean, I've not done any studies. But in commercial zones and the corporate zones and the industrial zones, this commission looks at it and says, you know what? This would be a good location for, or put an SDA to encourage some type of mixed-use development, whether it's, you know, some of the mixed-use development is apartments and office, you know what I mean? That's, you know, apartments and manufacturing. That is the kind of things that you, that you might see. But that, this gives you, the commission, not you personally, but the commission, the discretion to go out and say, that's where we want it. We're not going to let it be used in whatever, in this area of town. Well, actually Sheldon has 60,000, 60,000 square feet outside of the urban area. They have a, along certain urban zones, they go down as low as 20 or 10. That's why I said, I put the 40,000 square feet in just looking at some of the parcels coming up 67. That's all, the only reason I did it. You're more than welcome to increase the size of the parcels and, you know, that's input from the commissioners that what you think is appropriate. I was looking at an area that would probably be appropriate for a special development area and looking at how you wanted to, and I also honestly was going back to that informal meeting where some of the commissioners said, you know, hey, what about the, some of the smaller parcels on 67? What if we wanted to have, you know, some retail on the first floor and 40 apartments or 30 apartments up above? Those were on smaller parcels. Oh, certainly, certainly. Exactly. PDD can cover multiple parcels, although all the property owners have to agree if they're different property owners. Yeah, yeah. That's okay. Well, I mean, oh yeah, I mean, they would have to be, I mean, the apartments would have to be, there would be a covenant recorded on the land records. They would be done under 8-30G. They would be 40 years. Now, that's where you get the points. You know, that's what you're talking about. You get the points for that, whatever the points are for the 80% AMI. I will tell you, there are programs that are out there by the Department of Housing that some developers have been using where you get affordable, and I'm not sure about the point things, but it's only a 20-year. And what it is, it's funding that comes, and many developers are gobbling this up now. It's funding that comes from the Department of Housing per, per affordable unit that you, 80%, you have to be in the workforce housing group. In other words, anywhere from 60% to 120%, you're in there, they will fund it. You have to, that is guaranteed for six years, but it's, and you could pay it off after six years. As long as you owe the money up to 20 years, it has to remain affordable. I'm not sure about the point system on that. But what I'm talking about in here is the ones that are under 8-30G, voluntary under 8-30G, allow you to get the full credit. In the application, in the application, there could be an affordability plan. You could require the affordability plan at the final site development.
Other commissioners before I go out to the public? Okay, going out to the public. Do we have a list of people that signed up? Please come up to the podium, identify yourself.
My name is Debbie Alterio, 37 Cold Spring Drive, Oxford. Many years ago, Oxford had put in the sewer plant and they were at an 80-20 split with Seymour. At what point are we at right now with this? Because that was supposed to be for growth. You have put in many plazas up 67 that weren't part of that plan. It was originally 40 houses on Wyatt and Woodside, Cold Spring Drive. The town actually gave back money on a grant because they did not want to go forward. Haynes came in, they put in Meadowbrook, which they did put in a sewer line up to Quarry Walk with public access to it. And anybody who hooked into that sewer line paid and the money went to Haynes. My question to you is, what percentage is left if Oxford was at an 80 or 20% allotment on flow? And we put all these projects in, now you're talking, you want to put in more commercial area throughout this area. Where are we? What's your flow? What's Oxford's flow to Seymour? Because right now Seymour has only got 50%. What does Oxford have left of what's there for the 50% before we start paying for this stuff?
Our contract, our sewer contract with Seymour is not something this commission has on hand at the moment. That would be through the sewer people.
WPCA, but, but it does affect what grows, grows through Oxford.
You're, you're correct. And before we make a decision, that's something we would take into consideration and get the information from the appropriate source.
And what, what gives us security? We have just went through a flood, just, just in that one area. We've had a home wiped away. We have had a lot of things. We've had traffic, people, drove people crazy, was so terrible. What, is there going to be traffic studies done with this stuff? Sidewalks? You're in an aquifer. You are in a grade A aquifer.
We are well aware of, and we're not talking about any specific location at this time. We're only talking about a change to our zoning regulations. So whether it's in an aquifer or not, I don't know because we do not have an application for that. When we get an application, that will be something that we take into consideration. Kevin, you had something?
Just on the sewer, there's a, there's a contract with Nogatuck, I believe, and
90.
First of all, it's a million dollars, a million, million gallons per day and Seymour is 250 gallons per day. Those, I think those are still numbers. So there, and there's, according to the Water Pollution Control website, they give you some information about the number of miles and things like that.
Is it the Oxford or Seymour site? Because Seymour is not even acknowledging that we pay.
Oxford has their website.
They pay 190, I think it's 195,000, but if you look into Seymour's budget, it shows nothing for income from Oxford, where we do pay. And it's a standing line item.
Is there anything else, ma'am?
Nope, that was it.
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Who's next, please?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Lennox Schnoris. I live at 785 Oxford Road here in Oxford. I've read the proposed amendment to the Oxford regulation to the best of my ability. I think I understand it and I support it. I just want to make three quick points. Change cannot be stopped, but it can be managed. Historically, when Oxford fights with developers, the results have been both a loss of control and increased costs for the town. I humbly suggest that negotiating may yield far better results for all. This amendment provides a good pathway toward better outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Lynn Hague. I'm an Oxford resident.
Where do, what's your address, please, for the record?
47 Highland Road. I'm speaking tonight regarding the PDD proposal. And I also have a hat on because I'm a certified municipal planner and have worked for over 30 years in the planning and land use field. And I do have familiarity with how PDDs function. The concept of a PDD is appropriate and I generally support it. Allowing higher density development that includes residential uses where water and sewer infrastructure exists is very wise land use policy. It gives those commercially zoned parcels that have sat vacant for many years a second chance. Please note that the primary purpose of a PDD is to allow density with a mix of uses. If the intention of the commission is to allow residential within a commercial district but not allow density, then this zoning tool is not an appropriate tool to use. However, if the commission supports higher-density mixed-use development, I would recommend modifications to the proposal as submitted. The commission should consider adding parameters that will ensure that all proposals will be, one, located in appropriate areas, two, provide an acceptable density, and three, be designed to make Oxford proud. Despite Attorney Thomas's statement for not including bulk standards, I believe you should set some clear standards for development or for developers to work within. Basically set maximum and minimums, the, the maximum and minimum envelopes that you want to see on a site. You can still negotiate with developers. So the recommendations that I include, or that I would make for you to modify would be section one, stress the clear intention of allowing for dense development that includes residential uses. Number two, I am a bit confused on the special development area because I don't have experience with those. I don't know when you would designate an area as a special development area. Would you do it wholesale now? Or would you just wait and do it on a case-by-case basis as interest comes? I'm not really sure. So I personally don't see any need for a special development area. If the first criteria is that the PDD can only go where sewer and water infrastructure exists, then a significant amount of Oxford is already ineligible. If you want to narrow that geography down further, then you can include more locational criteria within your PDD regulation. But don't keep the SDA as proposed. I think it's an extra step that doesn't seem to be necessary. In section two, first, I would require mixed income development. Don't make it voluntary. You decide, and keep in mind, I'm saying mixed income development. You decide the percentage of units that are to be affordable. Keep in mind that an income of $60,000 and $674 for a single person is considered low income at 80% of state median income. By setting a minimum percentage of affordable units, it sets a base that you can use to then negotiate with developers. Number two, I would include clear statements that green, vegetated, open space is strongly encouraged due to the rural nature of Oxford. And in doing so, development strategies such as the cluster housing that was stated and similar strategies. that was stated and similar strategies are recommended. The point of density is develop upward, not outward. Three, develop basic standards for PDDs. Determine your maximum building envelope. Will you accept a 10-story building as proposed? Or is five really the maximum that you'll go? Why don't you just say that out front so that the developers know and we're not wasting their time? Determine minimum building envelope standards. Single-family detached homes or one-story commercial buildings should not be acceptable as they do not provide the density that should occur in a PDD. That should be made clear. Lay out where your parking is desired. Is a surface lot between the road and structure adequate? Or should parking be located to the side, rear, or interior of the structure? Will you consider reduced parking minimums and shared parking as part of a PDD? If so, state that. It is my opinion that PDDs should be a minimum of 3 acres. However, this proposal, as you know, goes down to 0.9 acres. If minimum development standards are created, then the PDD size is of no consequence here. Lastly, Section 5 of the proposal. Make this section stronger to avoid clear cutting of parcels prior to any zoning approval. Existing trees of an as-to-be-determined minimum tree caliper should be maintained unless absolutely necessary for removal. Use this new regulation to tell developers what you want to see in their proposals. Don't wait to see what they give you. This is your opportunity to lead the developers rather than have them lead you. And I thank you for your time. And I have not enough, but some copies for your...
Admit to our coordinator.
Okay.
And she'll see that we get copies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who's next? Hello, who's next, please?
Carol. Good evening, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I actually would like to support this proposal as well. I do think it provides guidelines for the commission to seek conversations with developers that they may want to encourage to bring into our community. I do think there are populations within our community, and the young, that we want to attract, and the older population that may want to downsize.
Thank you. Who's next?
Linda Chaplinsky, 30 Freeman Road. Can you help me understand just very simply how the PDD differs from our VCMUD districting?
As, if I'm not mistaken, Attorney Thomas did state that the VCMUD was a similar type thing. Not exactly, but similar.
Okay, so then would this proposed text change massage and change the VCMUD? Or would this be separate? Okay, so this is new, because this is new section, correct?
Absolutely new.
Okay, absolutely new section, okay. And I too am concerned, not concerned, confused on where the parcels get designated? Or is that done case by case? So if a developer comes before you and says, "I would like to use this parcel under your section that outlines a PDD", that's when you entertain those conversations? Correct, okay. Okay. If we act on this in its present form, then as a town, we're being reactive. It might very well be the best next step for Oxford to create PDD zones, to create text within our regulations to address that. This may be a great thing to start and wrap our heads around. But if we adopt this as it is and don't take a step back, then we run the risk of unintended consequences. So I would ask this commission to consider very carefully if this is the right move. And if it is the right move, then let's craft our own resignation, excuse me, our own regulations and not adopt something that's been brought to us because clearly what's before us is intended to benefit someone who will be bringing an application before the town. So I echo much of what I think Ms. Hague said a few moments ago, and it made some very good points. So let's make sure that we craft Oxford's regulations, not adopt something that someone wants to be able to say, "Well, you said it here because we took what they wanted us to do and enacted it." Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Is there anyone else? Back to the commission. Is there anyone on the commission? Have any comments or questions at this time?
To the chair, I guess I'd say that, I mean, Linda's comment is well taken. We've seen a few of these come through. I think it continues to express the need of going back at our regulations and looking at it. But at no point should we just take at face value something handed to us and say, "Yep, that's it for us," right? We have to go back and craft it. But I think it is a valuable tool that we should look at. We've heard recently a lot of rhetoric around the 110 number, right? Whether that's the number in your head or not, the state's operating at those assumptions and those numbers. And they're going to be looking to the towns. And if we continue on the course we are, we're not going to have control of our own destiny. So looking at this, I think, as a commission would be very valuable and a very valuable tool.
Thank you. To close?
Well, I get a chance to respond first.
Please.
If you want more input, you obviously can't close the public hearing. Because it closes input.
I'm surprised that that request...
No, I didn't mean just input today. If you want to have a further discussion on it. I mean, to begin with addressing the First Selectman's comments, I put in a voluntary component. And as I explained to you, meaning that was encouraging the developer to include affordable housing in their application. And for the now 15th or 16th time, I'm going to tell you, the PDD is a zone change. So if you don't like what the developer comes in, you could turn it down. When you are adding a mandatory affordable component in accordance with your affordable housing plan, that's something you could seriously consider doing. You don't have to put it in the reg. You can simply say when they apply that what is your percentage of affordable? If you're going to, and this is a point, if you're going to tell developers under the PDD you need to comply with 8-30G, then why would they use the PDD? They would just use, the PDD has, they get standards. So an 8-30G, and this addresses some of the capacity. When a developer does 8-30G and is including 60%, he's got to pay for the 60%. So I may be oversimplifying it. But the five-story building becomes seven stories. When it's an 8-30G, it's irrelevant what you want in height because the burden is shifted. And as long as it doesn't do it. So you can demand that a developer, and there are developers that could voluntarily give you a few 60% units. But if you tell them, "We want 30% in accordance with 8-30G", then they're just going to file 8-30G and flip the burden onto them, okay? I understand about the bulk standards. And I'm being blatant. I think you develop the bulk standards looking at each site. So if you say, I'll give you an example. We'll talk about the height. You say, "I don't want any, I want a 500-foot square, I don't know, a 200-foot square, and nothing higher than five stories in any PDD." And now somebody comes in, a developer comes in and says, "Well, that's okay. If I were doing it on Oxford Road, but I want to do it. I want to build an eight-story high-density residential building up in the corporate area to service all of the corporations that are up there. Because that's out by the airport, and that's not a problem, building an eight-story out there." That, to me, that's a decision the commission makes when it comes in. And somebody comes in and says, "I want to build an eight-story on the De Souza property down past Tommy Kays Plaza." You say, "No, that's not going to work there. It doesn't work there." That's the advantage of the PDD. However, if you want to include bulk standards, you can include them. But I showed you a copy of what a statement of uses and standards is. That's what they have to come to you with. And you approve. So think about it. Do you want to try to guess at what standards you could put in here that would apply to all the properties? Or do you want the developer to come in with that, and then you modify that? And you say, "No, I don't want, I want on this site..." Because we're doing a, I'm switching around. I'm now moving into your chair. And saying to the developer, "No, no, I don't want 65% impervious coverage. On this site, I only want 50% impervious coverage, and I want more open space." You have the right to say all that. You have the right to say, "This has to be changed." So if you want to put them in, good. But then, my only point is, then you come up with a site and you say, "Oh, oh, this would be a good development, but you can't do it because we're requiring this in the regulation." That's my point. And I think there's benefits to both sides. Again, it comes back to trusting the commission, trusting you to do it. As far as the special development area, when is it designated? It's either time. You can decide. You can decide, you can look at it and say, "Look, we know one area that we wanted, that we want." And you could just sit as a commission and hold a public hearing and designate that area as the SDA. Or you can require each developer to come in and then say, "I want you to..." And propose an SDA over that site. So you can do it either way. It doesn't make any difference. You can then, in other areas, you can do investigations, hire planners. You know, hire a planner to come in and say, to study your industrial corporate area and say, "Where would be good locations for it?" Again, it's your decision. As far as sewer capacity, if a developer comes into you and the sewer capacity is full and where that sewer goes, he's just throwing money, and I don't mean to hit the pun, down the toilet. Okay? Because you got to make sure you've done your homework. As far as, I'm trying to look at my notes. As far as the affordable, and I'll be, I'm going to admit something. I did not look at your affordable housing plan. You know what I mean? But some of the towns set up a percentage for each, you know, size density. So as the density goes up, you require a certain percentage. At 100 units, it could be 14%, 16%, whatever the situation is. But when you're doing it and you're demanding it, it's usually at the 80% AMI. Now, you can ask a developer, "Can you give me 60% AMI?" But 60% AMI, area median income, the developer, there is a financial impact. So usually, when you ask for 60%, the developer wants more density to pay for it. That's how you pay for the affordable housing. You have more density, so you have more market. Okay? I don't like when commissions have questions and they close public hearings because it cuts off communication. And I will end with that.
I think...
I'd like to clarify, I must have misspoke. If the developer says no, the commission says no. I hope I made that clear. If you ask for 20% affordable or 15% affordable, and the developer says no, then you say no, and the developer... no, and the developer can buy you a beer, you know, and cry in it, because it's a zone change. So, and maybe I misspoke. The developer, when I say voluntary affordable, it doesn't mean I can or cannot do it. It means it encourages developer. You can change that regulation to say that every proposal has to have 10%. Every proposal has to have 50%, or you can do what other towns do and put a sliding scale in there. You can do it. But if you left it just the way it is, and a developer came before you and said, "I want to do 100 units," and you said, "I want 15, 18, 20 of them at 80% AMI," and developer said, "No, I'm not going to do it," then your answer is motion to deny? Yes, all in favor? Aye. Sorry, we deny.
At this point?
Sorry, no, Dominic, I had one more question for you. It's really to add on to what you just said. I mean, people clarified a comment you made earlier when discussing the potential to amend the, required amount of affordable housing. Clarify your comment earlier about that, what are the requirements?
Oh, that percentage, you would, you would not, if you're, if you're going to require it, you're going to require a certain percentage at 80%, I mean, like I said, 60% creates a different percentage. So you're going to require a certain percentage at 80% AMI in accordance with Connecticut general statutes, 8-30G. So you're going to get the 40-year thing, and you're going to get the points for it, okay? Yes, there are towns that have made it very clear, whether they use the PDD concept or some other concept, that if you commit with high-density residential in excess of X number of units, then you have to have a certain percentage. Other towns have put in a sliding scale into their affordable housing plan and said to developers, "You have to comply with that." So one town has, starts at 10% of, of whatever it is, 10% of 10, or something like that, 10% of, you know, 15, and they go up the scale. So the more units you get, the more the percentage goes up to 14, 16, 18%. Either way, it works, and it's at fault.
What do you mean? We're changing heights of buildings to meet that requirement.
Yeah. Application under 8-30G requires the application, which half are at 60% application. Then that application is made under this statute, under this statute, then the burden shifts to you. The applicant puts in a zoning text change that says he can have 60% impervious coverage. And the applicant chooses one of the PDD. He only wants to do 60, 80, 100%. He's under the PDD, right? So he can't say to you, "Oh, no, I'm going to build it higher," because you say, "No, under this proposal, on this site, we only want this height. On this site, we want you to give us another type of buffer under that."
No, that's, that's what I was looking for. All right, thank you.
Anyone else?
Sir, let's...
I just have one comment, kind of following up. Actually, Linda was the first one to say it, and then Josh said it, and the first electman said it, right? This is our decision, right?
Yes.
He's brought this forward. If we decide to do a PDD, we're going to write our own, probably with the help of council, right? And we're going to write our own, but, I mean, it's really, I think that's straightforward.
You know, what we have here is a document submitted by a relatively expensive attorney.
I'd rather use the word experienced.
Experienced attorney, okay. Yeah.
I mean, that's why, that was just my comment.
To utilize this as a tool, I think we'd do ourselves, we would do ourselves an injustice by taking this and tossing it.
There may be something in it, but bottom line is, we're going to write our own.
We may just take this and make some modifications. Have you read it thoroughly enough to make modifications right now?
Well, I went through it, highlighted everything I don't like.
Okay, but the...
I've highlighted everything I don't like.
The point is, is I think, you know, considering the amount of documentation we got tonight, and so, I think we should be recessing this to give us more time to review these documentations, go over this, and come up with something that either accept this ad is, or modify it and accept it, or deny it. You know, that's our choices.
We did have two developers come here that refused to put affordable in.
And again, whatever. We're not talking about any specific sites or any particular applications. We're only talking about a zone change.
No offense, Dominic, I just, you know, the board's, the board's going to write their own, right? Oh, that's not what I said.
So anybody that wants to submit suggestive changes, so, has to go through our staff. Pardon me? Correct, yeah, that's what I, okay, that's what I was just saying, that we can communicate with our staff, he can communicate with our staff, but we can't directly communicate. So I guess at this point, I would entertain a motion to recess to... A date, please? Two weeks? People can get on the stick and do it in two weeks? Okay. We're still, we're still, we're still working on affordable stuff. We got time, yes? Four of them. We haven't, we haven't come out of May, you know, of, that, once that committee's done, then we put it into our regulations, so... That's not done.
May 6?
It's May 6.
At 7:00 or 7:30?
May 6 at, at 7:00 PM at this location. Yeah. Wait, wait. Okay, so I need that motion.
I'll move to recess the public hearing to May 6 at 7:00 PM here at the Town Hall.
I have a second, I do. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Now I'd like to do a 10-minute recess while we clear the room and everybody does their things.